It's a good class. I like it.
Good evening. My name is Craig R. Clark, and I'm the Executive Director to the Allegheny County Industrial Development Agency in connection with a project which is the subject of this hearing, which is on March 11th, 2025, 7 o'clock PM at the David A. Howe Public Library. Today, I'm holding this public hearing to our citizens to make a statement for the record relating to the involvement of the agency with the following project for the benefit of the Wellsville Business Park LLC and New York Limited Liability Company. The proposed project consisted of the following: the acquisition of interest in three parcels of land containing in the aggregate approximately 100 acres located on 37 Coats Street and Riverside Drive. Tax map numbers 225-20-1-2, 225-20-1-63, and 225-3-31.1 in the village and the town of Wellsville, Allegheny County, New York. Together with an existing complex containing approximately 4,200 square feet of space located there, the renovation of the facility, the acquisition and installation thereof and thereof related fixtures, machinery, equipment, and any tangible personal property. All of for gain owned and operated by the company as a business park containing various commercial manufacturing, industrial tenants, and any other directly indirectly related activities. Granting of certain financial assistance with respect to the foregoing included potential exemptions from certain sales and use taxes, real property taxes, real estate, mortgage taxes, and the lease with an obligation to purchase or sale of the project to the company or such as other person may be designated by the company and agreed upon by the agency. I intend to provide general information and the agency's general authority and public purpose to provide assistance to this proposed project. I'll then open the comment period to receive comments from all present who wish to comment either the proposed project or the financial assistance contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. However, before discussing the general information in opening hearing for public comments, I would like to first describe some details regarding the financial assistance. The estimated value of sales tax exemptions will be approximately $83,600, and the estimated value of property tax exemptions would be approximately $340,000. The previous provision sorry of Chapter 1030 laws of 1969 of New York constituting Title I of Article 18-A of the General Municipal Law, Chapter 24 of the Consigned Laws of New York amended in Chapter 99 of the 1973 laws of the State of New York as amended and codified in Section 906A of said General Municipal Law authorize the agency to promote, develop, encourage, and assist in the acquiring, constructing, reconstructing, improving, maintaining the equipment and quipping and furnishing of manufacturing warehouse, research, commercial, and industrial facilities, among others. Pursuant to Section 859-A, the General Municipal Law of State of New York, prior to the agency providing any financial assistance of more than $100,000 to any project, the agency must, among other things, hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 859-A of the Act with respect to said project. Since the proposed financial assistance to be provided by the agency with respect to the proposed project may exceed $100,000 and prior to providing any financial assistance to the proposed project, the agency must hold a public hearing on the nature and location of the project facility and proposed financial assistance. After consideration of the application received from the company, the members of the agency adopted a resolution on February 13th, 2005, authorizing the Executive Director of the agency to conduct the public hearing with respect to the proposed project. The Executive Director of the agency caused notice of the public hearing to be mailed in February 26, 2025 to the Chief Executive Officer of Allegheny County, the village and town of Wellsville, and the Wellsville Central School District, and published on February 27, 2025 in the Spectator newspaper general circulation available to the residents of the village of town of Wellsville, Allegheny County. In addition, the Executive Director of the agency caused notice of the public hearing to be posted February 28, 2025 on the agency's website and also the public bulletin board on March 3, 2025 in the town of Wellsville and also on their website for the village of Wellsville. Per the Act, the Executive Director of the agency also caused public hearing resolution to be mailed to affected taxing jurisdictions jurisdictions on February 19, 2025. Copies of the public hearing were available on the table. You have those. So I've already handed them out. And unless there's an objection, I'm going to suggest waiving the full reading of the notice of this public hearing and instead request the full text be in the public hearing and insert it into the record. Is that okay? Because it's already, I've already discussed it, actually. The comments received today at this public hearing will be presented to the members of the agency at or prior to the meeting at which the members of the agency will consider whether to approve this undertaking on the proposed project by the agency and the granting of the agency of any financial assistance in excess of $100,000 with respect to the proposed project. The notice of the public hearing indicated the written comments should be addressed to Craig R. Clark, Executive Director of the agency, and I have no written comments at this time prior to the public hearing. If someone wants to have written comments besides the comments today, please send them to me. Now, I'll go back. I will now open the public hearing for public comment at, I think it's 7:06. And by way of operating rules, I mentioned I wish to make a public comment, please raise your hand. I'll call on you. Please wait to be recognized. Once recognized, please stand and state your name and address for the record because we're going to have a full written document of this. And please keep your comments to three minutes depending on how many comments. We can go longer later. So everybody has their chance. If comments mirror those of someone who has already spoken, you may so indicate and relinquish the podium to another speaker. When everyone has had the opportunity to speak, I'll conclude the public hearing. The record of this public hearing will be prepared and reviewed by the members of the agency in connection with the agency's considerations for proposed project. Again, this public hearing is a solicit of public comment. We're not here to answer questions. However, we will in the course of the public hearing consider questions if we have the information to answer the questions and there's sufficient time to consider such questions. Now, ask if there's anyone in tenancy who wishes to comment on either the nature and location of the project or the proposed financial assistance. For the record, again, just make sure I know who you are so I can record that. Other than that, just so you know, it is live too, streamed live, so. And there will be a video copy as well as the hard copy. Yes? I need to know your name, please, and stand up so I can.
Jay Nicholson from Ramsey Avenue, Wellsville.
Thank you.
Former Dresser-Rand employee.
Sure.
What if, does this encompass the manufacturing facility, the small office building, and the large office building?
I'll have to check now that Chad just gave me some. I think it includes all, but right now the office building is not being used.
Okay. If it is the small building, which is located between the large office building and the manufacturing facility, has there been a code inspection of that building? That building was built in the 1940s or earlier. Worked in that building for about 10 years, 10 years ago. There are large cracks in the stairwell. The building is settling. And Dresser-Rand had planned to actually demolish that building because of the settling and it is unsafe. So if any money is going to be poured into that building, a code inspection is an opportunity to look at that building.
As far as I know, the proposal that they've given us in the project is the main manufacturing facility is what they're talking about.
Main manufacturing.
The large space, yeah.
Okay, not the office.
No.
Okay. Then can I ask? The boiler does not work in that building, hasn't for years and years. The only one that had any knowledge whatsoever of that boiler was Ron Coleman, who recently passed away. So how do they plan to divide that building and keep that building? And do they have a manufacturer in mind that has spoken up and wants to move into there? Extremely difficult to divide that manufacturing facility.
Somebody had asked earlier, most of the space is already rented to primarily three different companies.
Okay. And like I said, I don't think it can be easily divided, but must be there if they look at that. And when they took the machinery out of that building, some of the large machinery were sold. There are huge pits. For example, the one machine that was called a Cobra is probably 15 to 20 foot deep hole where the machine was put to stabilize. What are their plans for filling in all those holes?
They're all, all of them are now temporarily filled in.
Temporarily?
Yeah.
Okay. My last thing I wanted to ask is if this is branded, will they buy everything locally and will they use local labor?
As far as I know, most of the companies in there are using local labor, yes. But I don't, as far as the construction piece, I don't know. I'll have to ask. I'll find out.
Thank you.
I'm Chad Allsworth, Town of Wellsville Supervisor. In 2023, the Town of Wellsville was sued to get a reduction in the assessed value of this property. The Town of Wellsville entered into a settlement with the Wellsville Business Park owners and agreed to a settlement that reduced the tax levy on the portion that was in the village of Wellsville by approximately $300,000. And they agreed to leave the tax value of the rest of the property, which is the bulk of the manufacturing, at the current assessed rate of $990,000. Since that time, that was actually only valid for one year, but the assessed value has stayed the same and obviously would change with the new rebuild. At the time that they asked for that reduction, the only reason it was granted was because most of the space was not occupied. Since then, well, several weeks after we agreed to it miraculously, it started to fill. And I understand it's a catch 22. The IDA is here to ensure that we are a business friendly environment. None of us can lose sight of that. But when I see the estimated value of real property tax exemptions of $340,000, I believe that's per year.
No.
So that's expanded over what timeframe?
Ten years.
So 1.5 million.
I've got to verify it, but I'm just saying that's what it was. It shouldn't be on per year. It's not an annual. I don't know what they're paying now after the year. I'll verify it, Chad.
The number seems extremely low.
I know. I'm just saying after you looked at those numbers, I hadn't seen those numbers.
Yeah, I mean, a $1.5 million investment, $20 on. So if it was only $20,000, which is much higher when you combine the school, the town, and the village. So that number has got to be much higher.
I'll check it and get back to you.
I guess the question I would have is it appears that this pilot is going to be in place for 10 years?
Our traditional pilots without deviations are five years, and then five years ramp up to 10 years.
Okay, so the escalation, what, so a pilot, which is what we're here to talk about tonight
Right.
is a payment in lieu of taxes. Okay? So unfortunately, what typically happens to spur business and bring them in, my opinion, is that for the first five years minimum, oftentimes 10 years, the payment is $0. Okay? Sounds great because it's business friendly, right? But when you take $1.5 million of assessed value, that means that money that they're not paying for a building is completely occupied and rented out. That cost is distributed amongst every owner of property in the Town of Wellsville because you have to pick up that because the levy doesn't change. So every time a pilot is executed in the Town of Wellsville, the taxpayers that are paying their fair share pay more. So you have to decide as a community if the benefit you're receiving is worth the increase in your tax bill. Because the new rebellion you got doesn't include taking this out. And any other pilot that gets executed will increase your tax levy as an owner of property in the Town of Wellsville. Okay? So that's not a question I'm discounting because there is a real impact. But I want everybody to understand that there's a real benefit too. The question I would have is if the space is occupied and they're generating more revenue than ever because of lease agreements, why would we consider a zero tax liability?
Yep. The reason that if you look through the process, they're going to invest another million dollars.
Okay, so that, that's the caveat.
That's the caveat.
That's what everybody needs to hear. So they're going to invest another million dollars in the infrastructure.
Right.
That you're going to pay for. That's how, that's how we get them here because the taxpayers are going to pay the tax so they can invest the money in their facility. I'm not saying it's right. I'm not saying it's wrong. I just, I want you to understand the impact. You know, the citizens of Wellsville that pay tax on their property are saying, if we agree to this, we don't direct them or ask them to do something different, that you're willing to pay more in your property tax so that they'll invest more money in that infrastructure. And you have to decide if that offset makes sense to you.
How many employees do they currently have and how many do they project in say one year?
Currently, I think it's 51. They're talking about adding another 15.
15.
15, but it's also retaining the ones they have, yes. Huh? Pardon me?
It's never true. I've never seen any places that they're going to add so many employees that have never followed through with it. I don't know. Have you?
Yeah, I have.
There's, there's been some positive examples.
Yeah, the last one was Longstrom. They actually added more than.
Yeah, Longstrom was one of those smartest pilots that was executed in the Town of Wellsville. I'll, I'll agree. It was a huge hit to the taxpayers. Just so you all know, when that happened, there's a $7 million valuation that you all got to absorb.
Where was that?
The older for here. I truly believe that if the IDA hasn't stepped in and helped in that situation, the investment that they made to change that facility to do what they're doing now probably would have been a difficult one to do. They may not have done it. Or a reduction in their valuation for assessment. They've always been a very good partner to the Town of Wellsville. So when I, you know, I hear this stuff, that, that to me is important. So I don't mind helping somebody that's always been a member of our community. I guess I struggle with, you know, maybe the benefit to a company that's already realizing profits. So the escalation is, is it a zero for five or is it a zero for 10?
Five.
And then what's the escalation rate?
20% here.
Okay. So this number probably is closer to accurate.
I think it's close, but I'll verify it.
Yeah, you know, we don't know what the new assessed value of that property would be. And I guess the biggest question I would have is so during the course of this pilot, do they have the right to challenge their assessed value?
A property owner can always challenge their assessed value.
Right, so every time an assessed value is challenged, the Town of Wellsville taxpayers pay the attorneys to fight that, just so you know. And we get it every year from every major commercial property in Wellsville. Not every, but many. We spend between $15,000 and $40,000 a year in attorney fees funding assessed values, so. If the assessed value of that property is now with a new, I don't know what it is. I didn't look at it because I didn't want to have my mind distorted, but I would assume it's grossly under assessed at 1.4 million. So if it's truly 3 million, then these numbers all expand. The impact is greater. Right?
It all depends on your tax rate and levy. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I get it. You know, I mean, it's.
It's potentially greater, yes.
Right.
Just before we go into more chat, I got to get your name that you made that question.
Okay. Mike Ryski, Village Trustee.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I do have another question.
Oops. Okay.
We spoke about employees.
Right.
You got 50, you said 51 employees.
Right, that's what.
Is there a timeframe that you have to bring these 51 employees in or is it just speculation?
No, it's within the timeframe of the pilot.
What's that timeframe?
10 years.
Within 10 years?
Within 10 years, but obviously we have, they have to report every year to me. There's a, there's a clause, basically. There's a clause if they don't meet the target.
What benefit is it to the Town, Village, and Wellsville taxpayers for them to get a taxpayer? What is our benefit being people well settled?
Well, the benefit, the reason that companies come to us is that helps offset some of their investment.
Their investment.
Their investment, their investment in the process, which in the buildings that they either build or redevelop so that they can keep their employees in the building and/or keep the leases going, yes. So, so, so they're basically, it is a way to help the company finance their improvements.
So we're helping them with their business so they make a profit. And we get nothing.
You get the employees.
We get 51 employees over 10 years. Which they have anyway, if they didn't get this pilot or get anything, they would still have to grow their business, correct?
Well, that, that's all dependent. I mean, the whole theory upon helping people is they invest. And if you help them invest, they do actually spend the money invested.
Why don't you invest in the people in this area rather than having people come in to invest in their business coming in? And I guess I'm a little confused on the logic.
Well, the logic is always, no matter what our projects are, we look at the benefits of the community, which is usually jobs and investment. And if they're going to invest enough money as well as enough jobs, either retained or new jobs, then we look at the potential financial assistance.
And do you work for the county or do you work for the state?
I work for the Allegheny County IDA.
So benefits of the county in no way either, correct?
It's, it would be the benefit, the, the town or the wealth or the village actually benefits more, but the county, obviously you all live in the counties.
I'm still trying to see the benefit from the village with their taxpayers paying for their taxes and their employees and any improvements they want to make to their building when they sell in 10 years when this pilot's over. The profit they make, is there something that they sell in 10 years where they have to do something to the, no, see, that, that makes no sense. It really doesn't.
That's the purpose of the pilot. That's all I can tell you. Name, please.
Tim Colligan. I'm a Herman Avenue resident.
Thank you.
So can, there's, is there three businesses in there currently?
There's, there's three that I've seen for sure. There was a fourth. I'm not sure if he's still.
Is the turbine rebuilt with Kenley or?
Ken, Katz. It's now called Katz, yes.
And what else?
RMS. That's the ones that are getting the boiler back up and running, and they're also repairing and going to be testing turbines.
Okay. And are they in, in business currently?
Yes, they actually have another facility over in Olehan as well, but the boilers are only in the Wellsville facility.
Okay. And so the, the number of 51 employees, is that all three companies?
No, it's just RMS and Katz.
Okay. And so the projected 15 new employees is what, between those two companies?
Those two companies plus some of the other ones, Logisticus and a couple other that are renting space that are using it for storage.
And my, my point on that all was.
It's not just one company. It's all, all five companies.
If there was new business trying to be enticed in there as a neighbor, I'm interested in what that business is.
Sure.
I mean, I sat, I've been a resident of Herman Avenue for, between two houses for a long time, and I never had a problem with the Dresser-Rand in their heyday with the traffic going in and out of there. You know, the associated dirt that comes with traffic, that didn't bother me, but I would be more concerned with what kind of business is projected to go in there and then the resulting tax benefits that we might give to them.
Right now, it's, it's those manufacturing that are related to the, the old Dresser-Rand facility and, and quite a bit of, of storage space.
Like a coal storage, you mean?
Coal storage, yes, but primarily for most of the PV panels that are being put up around here in the area. Solar projects.
Does that, what, did you say earlier that there's new construction planned?
No, they're, basically the construction is to fix the infrastructure in the building a lot, like the roofing and things like that. If they can't fix those things, obviously they're not going to be able to continue to maintain the tenants. So it's investing in the infrastructure. Repair the holes that you talked about permanently, roof repairs, and then some HVAC and lights, things like that, things that never were upgraded and have plenty.
And between what everything was said, did that include some tenants in the office building?
Not at this stage. We've showed it a number of times. We're trying to, to help them find entice somebody in the office space, but right now that's not high on anybody's list, was it? The changes from COVID, people aren't doing a lot of office space renting.
Yeah.
The world has changed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My name is Jeff from around from the Village of Wellsville. I just, there's 51 people working on Coats Street now?
There's 51 associated with those companies. A lot of the people from Katz are actually out in the field, but they're still working for Katz. So it would not exist if Katz wasn't in that building.
Okay.
If you go to the building, there's 10 to 15.
Okay.
But they employ that many people, which a lot of them are Dresser-Rand ex-employees and local people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jay Nicholson from Ramsey Avenue. I just don't think right now they're very good take care of the property. They're not mowing the lawns. There's weeds growing up through the parking lots. I don't know where they're originally from, but I know they're not local people. I believe they're from Rochester.
Rochester, yes.
But they don't seem to be taking any pride whatsoever in the property. So I just don't know how good they would be about upholding what they're promising right now. I just don't think they have any real interest in this area and the people.
Okay. I'll pass that on. I would, I think they are, but they've been struggling because they just recently rented most of that space, you know? They had about, only about a third of it rented till recently. You know, it's struggling because it's a big facility. Takes a lot to heat and keep that stuff going. But I don't, I'll, I'll pass that on.
Thank you.
That's why we're here.
Just out of my curiosity, you have the Village, the county, and the town. Do they have a say in this at all to say no pilot?
We have public hearings and then we pass on all the public hearings and all the comments, and Chad knows this, and it will be discussed at our board meeting. So do you have a veto? No, but that's why you're here and that's why we're having the discussion.
That's what I wondered if we have a say in it. We have no say.
I didn't say that.
You have a say in that at all.
Yeah, that's why I said there's no vote, but that's what the say is, that you passing that on to our board members who are community members from Wellsville and the community, and they'll listen, I can tell you that. And Chad knows that.
Can I ask one, a couple of questions?
Sure. That's why you sat up front.
Yeah. How many board members currently reside in the Town of Wellsville?
Oh, Randy Scheller's here. And Rich O.
Rich is no longer here.
Well, he still has property. He's still his resident.
But is he a member still?
He's still a member, yes.
He's a voting member?
Yes.
And he attends?
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess.
And obviously you could, you can't find two people that do more for the village.
I, I don't disagree.
I'm saying, and they will listen.
And the, the board is comprised of how many people?
Five.
All right. So two of the five are Town of Wellsville
Correct.
property owners.
Right.
Randy and who else?
Richul.
But he doesn't live here anymore, does he?
No.
No.
He still has property here, he still is a resident.
He cares about Wellsville, his term must be near.
End of the term, he'll be end of the, probably this year.
Um, and then one other quick question was, in the process, gathering the permit, or not, the application and all that. Were financials disclosed that showed the revenue generated from lease payments?
No.
So the IDA does not know that they have a need for a pilot because they don't know the financials?
We do not have their financials, no.
Is that typical?
It's typical.
Why give them all the breaks if you don't know if they need to, you know, need to get the money break as assessment taxes if they are well funded?
We, we can find more information in financial piece, I mean, we can ask them, I think they'll give it to us.
I, I would strongly suggest that the IDA doesn't execute this pilot until they receive the financials. I understand the million dollar investment in infrastructure, nobody wants to see that building be completely dilapidated and ultimately end up on the public role where nobody wanted to take over it, so we all have to understand that that million dollar investment could be a great thing for Wellsville just from the standpoint of maintaining the property, right?
Well, yeah, maintaining it in the state that they can still lease, yes.
Right. But I, I think it, in my mind, there's a responsibility of the IDA to, to understand the financial need before asking the taxpayers to.
I could validate that because I do know about how much they've been leasing and what the cost was, but I don't have it in writing.
Okay, so you know that in order to make this project move forward and invest a million dollars, the math doesn't work without a pilot?
I think, yes, pretty much.
Okay.
And that's because of, I know, I know what they started at, some of their lease rates and what they were getting and how much they were leasing.
Okay.
In the ballpark, I don't have the, I don't have what you're asking, but I can get that.
Yeah, and I don't think the public.
No, I wouldn't share it publicly, but I can, I can review it because I know.
I think it's important for the board to do that.
No, I know.
Good conversation.
No, it's good.
I mean, everybody needs to understand the benefit and the cost.
Right. Yeah, we don't take these lightly, I hope you know that and Chad knows that.
No, I, I, I know that.
Stacy Pridicos, resident of the village. Related, do we know what they're going to spend a million dollars on?
Yeah, it's in the application, that's what I was giving you the.
I've got this here?
No, but that's what I was reading off their application, it's on our website.
Oh, I see it here, never mind. So specifically, this is pretty general.
No, it's forty thousand dollars repairing holes, two hundred thousand dollars for repairs for the roof, over two hundred thousand dollars HVAC, a hundred and seventy for lights, et cetera, but I, it's on our website.
Not on here?
No.
Okay, good.
But I, but I have it on the, it's on the website, you can look at. The full application.
IDA website?
Yes, if you look at the IDA website under the Wellsville Business Park, the full application is on there. And I, I can let you look at this, it's not anything, not that the public can't see, I just don't have one copy.
Okay, and then how many of these pilot things do we already added then?
Well, PM Research was one of the first ones we did.
There's a lot. We're gathering that information at the town of Wellsville.
And I've given you all to your, your clerk, you have it all.
Because the public needs to understand that as part of this rebuild process too.
Do you have information on how many of those did bring benefit to the town and how many?
I will never determine the benefit.
We report on those annually, but if I, I can report those to the town.
Yeah, that's very subjective. I can only give you the information of how many pilots there are and the total number that affects your taxes.
I have.
I'm not qualified.
You can see if they followed through on the promises.
Oh, I have, I can give Chad the number of employees, and they've all followed through on their commitments, and after that, they've been, they've invested that much money or more, so the investment's been made.
It'd be, it'd be good information for the.
I have to report it pub, every year, so I can get you a copy of that.
What is the timeline for the agency to approve or disapprove?
Well, you, you brought up some interesting questions, so there's no, we originally were going to, it's on the docket for Thursday, but we can move that, it's not a problem.
Because my thought with this was between the town and the village, um, you know, if, if their voice as boards, you know, that, if they're, if they're going to meet with their boy, boards and discuss it, and then, you know, I pass information on, you know, whether the town of Wellsville approves it or the village of Wellsville approves it, you know, in principle. I, I think those would be interesting comments.
Well, just like this, you can give me comments, you know, whether or not the board approves it, we can review that, but that's not going to approve the pilot. But yeah, we could, I'll, I will talk to the board on Thursday, and I, there is no rush to do this. Sure.
Why didn't the IDA get involved with Cuba Cheese when they wanted to be in Belmont and?
I was heavily involved, I spent four years of my life trying to get them to go to Belmont.
Because I'd never heard anything about the IDA being involved with.
Yeah, we were intimately involved in it, well, unfortunately, at the time when they started talking to us, we tried to find three or four locations throughout the whole county, and then there was only one that was acceptable, and we had it all set, we actually, and, and things fell apart at the very end, it's unfortunate, but yeah.
Certainly did.
I know. Tell me about it, I, I spent a lot of time trying to do that.
Do people come to the IDA or the IDA move it up?
It varies, some of both.
In this case?
Just when they came to us, but we've been working with them as well, we've been working them since they took over the facility, we've been working with them to try to get more tenants.
When is their timeframe, like if you come to Thursday, then when does this program start?
They would probably start doing, that's why we don't want to delay too long, they would, they would probably do the improvements as soon as we approve the pilot. Because if they do it before the pilot, then it doesn't count towards the pilot, does that make sense? Just like a grant. You don't get credit for something you spent before. Sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Oh, Ian Helmstot, Wellsville.
Thank you.
Cassie Galley, Wellsville resident. I was just curious, you had mentioned three buildings and a hundred acres. Where is their hundred acres?
There's, they actually do own a hundred acres there. Side hill back there, they're not going to build on that, but there's a hill back there that they own.
The complex. I'm familiar with the land.
I know, but I'm just saying, there is actually a hundred acres there, believe it or not. Plus, if you go across behind where the, uh, substation is.
You referred to it as Riverside.
Yeah, there's an, if you go back there, there's another, there's another really nice development.
Right Foster Road.
Right Foster Road, thank you.
Um, Arabolinski, four two two North Main Street in Wellsville. Who owns those parcels now that they want?
They own, they already own them all.
They already, they already own them.
The business park.
Yeah, the, the business park owns all the land plus all the buildings.
How did they ascertain that they would gain fifteen jobs based on, on the?
Talking to all their tenants.
Talking to the tenants.
Plus, if, if they get to that state, they're talking about adding an employee, I think, as well.
So if the building was in better condition, um, they would be able to increase business or?
Correct. That's Catherine.
Catherine Rice.
I know who Catherine is, sorry.
How long have they been in there?
I want to say five years. About right.
We, we moved up, we moved out five years ago.
Yeah, it wasn't too long after the move out.
Pretty sure it was twenty-one.
Yeah, they've been, yeah, they've been four years, but it's four to five years.
We went up until five, so.
Yeah, they took over.
We lost it April nineteen.
Right, it wasn't too long after they took over.
Why has it taken them so long to request this? They've let it's basically empty except for the small part the Katz is running for four years, five years now. Why suddenly are they?
Well, as any company, when the decision to invest money, which is a million dollars, it has to have some return. And they're now getting to the point where a lot of the space is actually leased, so they can now look at investing some money, but they're asking for some help. It's not something they would have done when they first took over because they had very little of it leased.
But they got the property at a tremendous value.
I understand that, but I'm just telling you, any business will not invest money until they have some return on their investments. And everybody knows that here. So there was no return when they first started. Any other comments? I know I've answered a lot of questions, I hope you don't mind. I prefer to answer questions. I know that's not the real purpose, but I try to, I try to answer as many questions as I can.
I'll, I'll give one positive, uh, statement that hasn't been said. Most pilots are given with a larger investment.
Right.
And they're the, the payment is zero for ten years. I feel a lot better about this pilot than I have many others because the escalation starts in five years. For what it's worth, I mean, it's not, we didn't give them everything and get nothing back, they're going to start being positive contributors on tax levy standpoint in a five year timeframe rather than ten.
Is there any way they can, um, try to renegotiate that at five years?
No.
Is it, will it be set in stone?
That's our standard process, yeah.
And they can't renegotiate that?
I would have already had to send to Chad and everybody else a deviation if we went from our uniform UTEP, which is a basic here standard process. I want to say thank you, this is actually the, the better public hearing I've had in the seven years I've been with the board. So usually, it's only one or two people at that, so thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'll close the, uh, the comments at seven forty-three. Thank you. And if you want to see yourself on a stream, we will be posting this.